Good evening. I want to thank everyone for being here with us tonight. This is a very exciting time for us here in the community because we're able to have the City of Jacksonville oath-taking ceremony. This event is special to our community because it allows us to recognize the process by which we as citizens elect those to serve our community. For me personally, I want to thank the good Lord for providing a path for all of us to be here tonight, to join together, to allow us to recognize the few that have been selected by the many to serve our Jacksonville. For those that are coming in, I encourage you to find a seat anywhere up here in the front. We have some seats available next to Mr. Bittner. As you will notice, Mayor Sammy Phillips is not able to attend the meeting tonight. He has a family emergency that he's attending to. Mayor Phillips, we keep you and your family in our prayers. I do want to recognize a few people here this evening. We have North Carolina Representative Phil Shepard. We have Onslow County Commissioners Royce Bennett, Lisa Carpenter, Walter Scott. That's all of our Commissioners. We have Register of Deeds Omega Jarman. And we have Sheriff Chris Thomas. Thank you all for being here. And then for all the citizens, we appreciate you being here with us tonight. Without you tonight, it's just another council meeting. With you here present with us, it's a community event that allows us this evening to recognize two of our council members for the recent election. Public service is by no means something to be taken for granted. Public service takes time. Public service takes effort and it takes a commitment. To get there, it also takes commitment by our citizens. So I think each of you that decided to take effort to go and vote, thank you for being there on that day. That's a blessing for all of us. You allow us to do the work of the city and the community. We're going to start our process this evening by asking Dr. Washington and Mr. Sosa to step up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll come on up. If you can, please stand with us.
Do you want me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite Bishop Aubrey Mullen to come up and deliver the invocation.
Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we pause for a moment before proceeding with our affairs to give you honor and to give you praise. We'll certainly know that you are worthy of all of the praise because it is in you that we live and that we move and that we have our being. You are Lord of Lords. You are King of Kings. You are the everlasting Father. You are the sustainer of life itself. Without you, we would be nothing. We invoke your presence in this meeting tonight to lead us and guide us in such a way that it will be pleasing both to God and to man. Thank you, Lord, for our city government that labors to provide the necessary resources and services to all the citizens of Jacksonville, North Carolina, especially our first responders, law enforcement, and firemen. For those who have been re-elected or newly elected, we want to say a special prayer. Tonight, Lord, bless Mayor Sammy Phillips as he has sworn in for another term. You have allowed him to serve well in the past and we know he will do even a greater job in the future for all citizens because of the grace that is upon his life. We ask of God that you would bless Councilwoman Dr. Angelia Washington to continue to represent the citizens of Ward 4. Give her the grace and the humility to carry out such an awesome responsibility. Give her favor with both God and man. Bless Councilman Logan Sosa. Give him the wisdom and the insight to do an awesome job that would benefit those whom he represent, as well as all the citizens of our town. And then, Lord, we ask that you would bless the entire city council. As much as possible, let us abide in unity. For Psalms 133 says, "Behold how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. It is like the precious ointment upon the head that ran down upon the beard, even Aaron's beard, that went down to the skirts of his garments, as the dew of Hermon and as the dew that descended upon the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord commanded the blessing, even life forevermore." Bless the servicemen and women of Camp Lejeune and New River Air Station who played vital role in the sustainability and the vibrancy of our economy. God protect our troops, both home and abroad. And God bless America. It is in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Mullen. Please be seated. Bishop, if you took care to get up and speak again, we're all here and we can just continue this on this evening. Everything that's been written, we'll just go back to whatever you have and then we'll just let the Spirit lead us tonight. But thank you. I appreciate it. And anyone, as I said, anyone that's come in, there are some seats up here. Feel free to have this seat or you can have these seats over here. We want you to be welcome as you're here this evening. I do want to say congratulations to Mayor Phillips, to Dr. Washington, and to Mr. Sosa. Those that serve put forth the effort and they step out to be leaders in our community. If you look at the back of your program tonight, there's a few quotes. The last one by General Powell says, "Great leaders are almost always great simplifiers who can cut through argument, debate, and doubt to offer a solution everybody can understand." Four years ago, when Mayor Phillips and Dr. Washington were sworn in, part of the dialogue then was that the council, Mr. Bittner made this comment then, this council works well together. And I can tell you for being here this year, this council does work well together to figure out what the needs of the community are, to listen to the citizens of the community, whether that's five people or 72,000, and to effectively make decisions that move our community forward. So I say that to the newly electeds, congratulations, and to this council tonight. We appreciate your efforts to lead us as we move forward through exciting times, just as the bishop just said. So thank you for making those remarks and doing them so much better than I have, Bishop. At this time, I want to get to the important part of this evening and I want to go ahead and get the excitement there and to go and have our oath of office. So I'm going to invite Honorable Judge Christopher Welch to the front to administer the oath of office to Councilman Logan Sosa. Mr. Sosa, if you want to join us at the front, that would be great.
You should be a pro at this one.
I know. You've got some practice. All right. Put your left hand to the Bible. Raise your right, sir. Repeat after me. "I," and state your name.
"I, Logan Sosa."
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"That I will support and maintain."
"That I will support and maintain."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina."
"And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina."
"Not inconsistent therewith."
"Not inconsistent therewith."
"And that I will faithfully discharge."
"And that I will faithfully discharge."
"The duties of my office."
"The duties of my office."
"As councilman."
"As councilman."
"And maintain and uphold."
"And maintain and uphold."
"All the laws and regulations."
"All the laws and regulations."
"Of the City of Jacksonville."
"Of the City of Jacksonville."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sosa, if you guys will hold your spot, Lisa Miller's going to take our official swearing-in photo. So if anybody else would like a photo, feel free to take that now. Anyone that wants to join him, you can join him as well for that picture.
Come on that row.
I heard you saying they've called you. You've been beckoned. Congratulations, Mr. Sosa. We will sell these photos after for $55.95 for anybody who wants to pick up a copy. If you're current on taxes, you can get a discount of $5, but just see the clerk after. She's going to handle that. Thank you all for being a part of this opportunity. Now I'd like to invite Honorable Judge Paul Hardeston to the front to administer the oath of office to Councilwoman Dr. Angela Washington. Dr. Washington, if you'll join Judge Hardeston.
I have a couple of my students that want to join me.
Everyone you want, Dr. Washington.
All right. And Michael. And my sisters and brother. Come on down. Go. I guess you're going to be in a minute. Come on. I'll be swaying. This is my official Bible, so that lets you know when you are an elected official, this becomes your best friend. Please come. Oh, Michael and Carrie, why are you still sitting there? Oh, we got a staff that does that. Dr. Williams, come on out, please, sir. Ms. Moore, please come on. Cynthia, come on out. My role model, come on out. And my first grade friend, Joyce. And Tyrone Willingham, where are you? Come on, Mr. Willingham. Mr. Mumford, come on out, please. Mrs. Schubert, come on up, please. Yes. Katia, come. My classmates.
Feel free to take that other side too, if y'all want the other side.
This is family.
Lotte, Lotte, that is us.
You can handle this tape.
I think I'm ready. I think we got everybody. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Gillian. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready.
If you'll repeat after me, please. "I," and state your name.
"I, Angela Jewel Washington."
"Do solemnly swear."
"To solemnly swear."
"That I will support and maintain."
"That I will support and maintain."
"The Constitution and laws."
"The Constitution and laws."
"Of the United States."
"Of the United States."
"And the Constitution and laws."
"And the Constitution and laws."
"Of North Carolina."
"Of North Carolina."
"Not inconsistent therewith."
"Not inconsistent therewith."
"And that I will faithfully."
"And that I will faithfully."
"Discharge the duties."
"Discharge the duties."
"Of my office as councilman."
"As my office as councilman."
"And maintain."
"And maintain."
"And uphold."
"And uphold."
"All the laws and regulations."
"All the laws and regulations."
"Of the City of Jacksonville."
"Of the City of Jacksonville."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Feel free to get into a good organization. I don't want anybody to miss out. Lisa Miller's going to take this picture. Anybody else that wants to take pictures, please step up now. You can have any room there to take the picture.
But I still have a thought in my mind spiritually.
I would like to, thank you. I would like to say one more time, congratulations, Mr. Sosa and Dr. Washington. We appreciate it. And before I finish my time to speak tonight, because the council usually doesn't allow me to have microphone time, I want to invite every one of you to come back at our first meeting in January. We have some very exciting items in January. If you can't make January, February, March, and April are great months for us. So this is how we meet. We invite everyone here. We probably won't have refreshments at those meetings, but I would like to see you, especially Mike Mumford. If we could have him come back in January, that'd be real nice. At this time, I will invite the council to the dais to conduct the business of the city.
I think I'm sitting in my seat.
Absence of our mayor this evening, I would like to have you conduct or we conduct this meeting together similar to how the county commissioners do it and what they did actually yesterday, and that is elect a chairman. If you would allow me to preside, I get no vote, but to preside, we can get the agenda adopted and then hopefully get your mayor pro temp adopted, who at that moment in time can take over. So with that, I would, looking at your agenda on page two of your program, ask that there be a motion to adopt the agenda and the one consent item with the election of the mayor pro temp being elevated to number one on that agenda and the deletion of the advisory committee liaison appointments that Mayor Phillips will do at a later date. If I could get a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're doing good so far. The next, as you, your agenda is the election of the mayor pro temp. As you know, the mayor pro temp is the one person who sits when the mayor cannot serve, such as this evening, and will sit here in just a moment, hopefully. So at this time, I will open up the floor for nominations for the mayor pro temp.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jerry Bittner as mayor pro temp.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, I move that the nomination be closed and accepted by acclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Bittner, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now turn you, turn it over to you to preside.
Well, I could pick up these remarks that Sammy had prepared. That was 15 minutes, but I think everybody's looking forward to refreshments. So my official act will be looking for a motion to adjourn so we can go out. Yes, sir?
I think that you'd be impressed if you'd accept remarks by the other members of council and they have, because I think there's some remarks.
Excuse me. I'm big time and the sun's shining. I'm speeding up.
First minute on the job.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Dr. Washington and Councilmember Sosa. It's been an honor serving with you and hopefully I'm glad to continue to serve with you as we continue to move forward to make Jacksonville a better place. You know, we have healthy debate and unlike other communities, we haven't blown up, had any fistfights, anything of that nature. I wish that we continue to have healthy debate, but we also keep in mind that we serve for not only those that have much, but those that have least and that we continue to make Jacksonville one city. Thank you.
Logan?
First, I'd like to congratulate, you know, the mayor Phillips and then Dr. Angela Washington on their election. Also like to thank my wife and my son for their support and my family, my friends for coming out. I feel like I probably hold the record for having the most swearing-ins in the last three years. So not many people can say they've done this every three years, but when I sent my letter in to get into this and I made a promise I was going to stick with it and I felt like I've done that and I'm glad that it finally served my first full term at four years, so I'm excited about it, being here officially and being here for the long term. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, we all wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the blessings, grace, and forgiveness and mercy of the One who sits high and looks low, and that's God our Father. I give all blessings and acknowledgement to Him because of just what He has done in my life and the presence of each and every one of you here today. Congratulations goes out to Mayor Phillips and prayers is sent to his wife that she will overcome without any type of disfigurements or any type of other disorders as relating to her condition. So we pray for speedy recovery for her. To Mayor Pro Temp Bittner, wow, I'm going into my 13th year serving with you. Mr. Bittner is like a steel hand and a silk glove. A lot of wars of wisdom, a lot of years of experience. Even when things may not be orthodox or controversy, we can look to Mr. Bittner for those pearls of wisdom to guide us through, to navigate, and to stay on the course that best serves our city. To Mr. Sosa, congratulations once again to you and I look forward to serving with you and now that you're on the regular cycle now, the appointments and the confirmations will come on every four years. So congratulations again to you. If nothing more, one thing that I want to leave with everyone tonight, Mr. Carter had the task of, over the past two years, to lead the city into what could have been viewed as tumultuous times, the challenging of the federal lawsuit to basically repeal the ward system here in Jacksonville, as well as looking at and presiding over the redistricting committee. Your expertise was well needed and the vision and the passion that you talked about in terms of providing racial harmony is not only something to be admired, but the stance that you took on wavering. And the reason that I bring this up is that it has been in the news, believe it or not, for those of you excluding me, because I was just born this past Sunday on my birthday, but for those of you who have had the privilege of walking God's green earth for over 60 years, this country was in a very tumultuous time back in 1963. The civil rights movement was at a pinnacle and political leaders found themselves dealing with a plethora of crisis and very few resources to help solve some of the issues that America was dealing with. Discrimination was at its highest, so things such as diversity, equity, and inclusion didn't exist, rather division, exclusion, and invasion. When I started doing the research, there were seven major events that happened in 1963. First, starting in April with President, not President, with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. pinning the letter from the Birmingham jail, talking about, as well as calling for a peaceful civil disobedience is sometimes warranted in order to bring about a change in a community. June the 11th, Alabama Governor George Wallace stood in front of the Foster Auditorium at the University of Alabama to prevent the enrollment of African-American students Vivian Malone and James Hood from enrolling. And later that evening, President John Kennedy gave one of his most powerful speeches talking about civil rights and denouncing segregation and announced also that he was submitting a comprehensive plan with regards to civil rights with Congress. The very next day, Megur Evans, NAACP field officer director, was murdered in his driveway and it was witnessed by his wife and two children. Later that year, on August 28th, the March on Washington to advocate for civil and economic rights for African-Americans was talked about, but the highlight was the famous speech that Dr. King gave, "That I Have a Dream." Believe it or not, three weeks later, September 15th, the bombing of the 16th Street Church in Birmingham, Alabama, killed 14-year-old Addie Mae Collins, 11-year-old Denise McNair, Carol Robeson, 14, and Cynthia Wesley, 14. And the pinnacle was on November 22nd when President John F. Kennedy was assassinated. We are living, once again, it appears to be, back in the 60s. The methods have changed, but not necessarily the speech and the actions. And this city council is going to be tasked, moving forward as city leaders, to do what is best for our community. And sometimes doing what's best as leaders is putting aside common agendas and picking up the common cause for humanity. Because when one wins, we all win. Leaders are tasked with creating a win-win versus a win-loss. Because even with the win-loss, at some point in time, the victor steps back and really have to assess, was it truly a win or was it a win by any means necessary? So I am privileged that as one of the senior leaders on this council, to say that this council is going to be tasked, but I am also hopeful, but I am also convinced that this council is going to do right by its citizens, whether it's the voters, whether it's the employers. This council is going to do right by our citizens. Each of us places our hand on that holy Bible. And that holy Bible contains a lot of words, but it also contains a lot of instructions, particularly for those of us who are serving in office. We are held to a higher standard and sometimes that standard gets rough because we're human. We're human. And we're going to make mistakes. But the part about making mistakes is that you can always ask for forgiveness. You can always repent and you can always have a do-over to make it right by the citizens. So on behalf of the voters, thank you for entrusting me. So on behalf of the voters, thank you for entrusting me. Thank you for allowing me to return back to the council. And individually to each of my council members, I look forward to another four years serving with you and making Jacksonville the best Jacksonville it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. I would just echo the congratulations to Mr. Sosa and Dr. Washington, and Mr. Phillips, who can't be with us here this evening, Sammy. I'd also like to say, you know, this is our last official council meeting of the year, so Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. I hope you have a very safe and happy holiday. And a special shout-out and thanks to Mike and his team in the Recreation and Parks Department, who spent a lot of time, and everyone else who was involved, because I know it wasn't just your team, but you guys hung the lights all over town to make Jacksonville look beautiful and festive for the holiday season. If nobody else loves them, I do. You should see my front yard. I try to compete. I do. Thank you. We appreciate all that effort. Please pass that along to every member of your team. It does not go unnoticed, it's one of our favorite times, for me, I can personally say it's one of my favorite times of year. My husband and my kids comment on it everywhere we drive. It's just a beautiful time of year, and that really accents the season for everyone who comes into our city and everyone who lives here. So thank you very much, and I have nothing else to say.
No way.
Write it down, may not happen again.
Councilman Warden?
Thank you. Echo the comments and congratulations to y'all for being re-elected. Thank you. What I like best about this council is the fact that we debate issues and ideas, not personalities. Not saying we're all the best of buds all the time, but we all agree that we're going to be civil with each other, we're going to debate the issues, we're going to try to find monies for those projects that we deem are necessary for our citizens, and we've done a good job in the past, and I pray and hope that we'll continue to do so in the future. And then just one other to echo Ms. Edwards on the Christmas lights, Riverwalk really looked great this weekend, this past weekend. Thank you. I was in Dollywood a couple of weeks ago, and they don't have much on y'all, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing about batting cleanup is that you get the opportunity to think about everything that's been said so far, and I couldn't agree more. In fact, I could, as my wife tells me, I need to use the word ditto. But this council will continue to work together, because we not only have the overall responsibility of working for the overall good of the community, but at the same time, our work is transformed by the hard efforts of our workforce and our leadership, including the city manager, Mr. Ray, and Mr. Carter. I give my thanks to them for their hard work and for the work of our city employees. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second. All those in the court, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.